We'll go ahead and get started, Dr. Bill, and thanks everyone for being here. I was informed that Mr. Burnett's running just a little late. And I told him to just be safe and come on in when he got a chance to get here or so.
Mr. Francis, if it's okay, since my two compadres here are still eating, I'll just do my two items at the end.
That's great.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll, when they finish, they've had a long day, we need to feed them.
Absolutely.
When they finish, we will, we'll get into their stuff. For the record, they're eating a salad, which is very good for them. So the first thing on the agenda is just sort of an awareness item. We don't know exactly everything that it means. We were informed by the State Department of Public Instruction for North Carolina that they will no longer authorize or do installment payments for 10-month employees. That sounds more ominous than it is in and of itself. A little feedback there, audio. Through the state, 10-month employees who desire to take money out of their, each of their 10 checks and place it in a state authorized account. And then that money would be issued to them in an 11th month check or a 12-month check. And so the good news is that we have talked to lots of the financial institutions and they are fully capable of doing that for employees. Those checks are automatically deposited in almost every situation anyway, and the banks can, can address that. There are a number of factors related to that change that we, in all honesty, just need to investigate. And I have put a call into our auditors. One of the things that we have to do, that is a state requirement, in the next two school years, we have to change to the finance and HR software that we have talked about. And you all may remember, last year, we actually picked a company to transition to. We have delayed that implementation because of COVID and because we're down some regular full-time employees in the finance department. So we think that will also impact that particular decision. So I've called Andy Deal with Anderson Smith &amp; White, they do our audit stuff. They have helped other school systems with transitions similar to this. And then I also called Dean Shatley, who, you know, is an attorney that we use administratively. You all use Pat Smathers. And he's familiar with some of this. So we'll get a lot of information from them and bring it back to you. But if people hear about this because it's on state websites and stuff, just, you know, let them know that we're aware of it, we're beginning to study it. It will not impact installment checks in June and July this coming summer. People already have that set up for this coming summer, so we have a little bit of time. But just wanted to make you aware of that. I've met with the finance department two times, and we just, we'll need to do a lot more investigation to make sure we do that well and, and consider all the related factors that we'll have to deal with for the next year or two. So that's just a heads up. Any, any questions about that early on? There may be some things I can answer, but don't know a whole lot about the details at this point.
I don't have any questions, anybody else?
Okay. The other item that I have is, you all, I think, have been aware for some time that I had written a draft administrative regulation about informal signs and posters and banners and flags that have shown up on campus. This is, we've never really had a policy about things that were informal that just showed up and we didn't know about them until they showed up. And we have lots of policies in place for formal displays. And none of those would be, be affected if I implemented the administrative regulations. It's not a board policy, it's an administrative regulation. But in a sense, what it would do is say to people, we're going to have lots of banners and flags and things at our events, and there are things that we have used for quite some time. The United States flag, the North Carolina flag, school flags, banners associated with our organizations like ROTC, clubs and organizations using signage in their activities. And so I sent you just a day or two ago, I hope all of you had a chance to look at it, the most recent draft. That, I got some help with that from Pat Smathers and from Dean Shatley. And then I also let the policy committee look at that. And I just wanted to get any feedback from you all because unless there's, you know, some kind of objection, I would plan to implement that sometime in the future, probably the near future. So I just wanted to see if you all had any comments or questions or any feedback you wanted to provide to me.
I think it's very well written.
Thank you.
And I think it's, it's very inclusive without violating students' First Amendment rights.
Yes, I think for that, I had a lot of help from, like I said, Pat Smathers and Dean Shatley. Policy committee made some good suggestions about just coding and things like that. But unless you all have additional feedback for me, I will probably implement that regulation. As you all know, regulations are superintendent rules that go alongside of policies, much like principals have rules at their school that go alongside policy. As long as they don't violate the policy, then they become an equivalent factor. Okay?
Very good, Dr. Bill.
Thank you very much, boy.
Yes, sir.
You guys ready? Okay, I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam, and he'll do his items, and then we'll go to Mrs. Barker.
Thank you. I will start with vaccination updates. Wednesday, yesterday, we were able to vaccinate staff that had requested vaccination at Haywood, HCLC, at Riverbend Elementary, Hazelwood Elementary, at Waynesville Middle School, and Canton Middle School. Approximately 260 folks, that seems to be the breakdown. They're looking at doing three separate weeks for the vaccinations. We are trying to avoid Wednesdays and Thursdays. Friday is optimal because some individuals get sick or flu-like symptoms following the vaccination. We really had no choice on this one, so this first one was on Wednesday. And we will continue to try to schedule additional schools as the vaccine becomes available. I want to thank our health department for looking after us and actually putting aside or storing back some of those vaccines so that they can reach all of our employees who wish to have the COVID-19 vaccination. We will not be completing or conducting vaccinations next week. The reason for that, the second dose would fall during spring break. And so there was some question as to why you're centering it around spring break when, you know, really folks are to stay close to home. Really just could not chance that. It's about $8,000 per day roughly to put on a mass vaccination site. That's the cost to the county. And you can see that we need to be reasonably certain that folks will be in town for those second doses. With that said, the following week, which is the 15th, we will obviously try to schedule on a day, again, either Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, with Friday being optimal. And the week of March 22nd, again, with Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday being optimal. Excuse me. That should complete all of our staff with first dose prior to spring break and second doses being available coming back from spring break. Any questions there?
How are the individual schools handling those vaccinations during the afternoon? Handling teachers assistants, employees, bus drivers specifically, if they choose to have the vaccination?
There, it really depends on the category or group. If, if it's custodians, they'll flex their hours, bring them in early. If it's bus drivers, they'll work with them. As long as they get there prior to 5:00, they're not going to turn them.
There's a window.
There's a 3:00 to 5:00 window.
Okay, nice, nice.
As long as they can get there before 5:00, that should be good. There's some unique instances where that's going to really be a stretch, but again, we're working through those on a person-by-person basis.
Any idea on percentage-wise, how many employees are getting them?
A little over 600 employees.
At those places you just mentioned?
That's for our school system at large.
So what, what does that make of participation rate?
That's about 60% right now.
What'd you think?
Correct. Any other vaccination questions? Okay. Turf replacement, just wanted to give you an update on this project. All is complete with the exception of windscreen. And the windscreen is in manufacturing right now, so just as soon as it's completed with manufacturing, they will be bringing that and installing it. The windscreen actually goes on the backside, not on the front side. You know, padding is on the front side. And if you'll remember, the manufacturer of that padding actually brought us a demo product that was vinyl wrapped on both sides, but the product we actually received is what we're intended to use. It is open on the back, it allows the padding to breathe, it gets rid of moisture. They strongly discouraged getting the full vinyl wrap padding for those reasons, which did not look the same to what we were presented. So they're, they're going to cover the back fissure at no charge with windscreen. So I think when all is said and done, it'll be a good-looking project, product. The fields look great. I don't know what kind of feedback you've received on that. It's like I told someone, I take, I'll take blame, but I won't take any credit because I did not design those fields. Our two high schools designed them, and I think they look spectacular. Any questions for me? On turf replacement.
Somebody had posted a picture Friday night of the, the field, an aerial photograph of Pisgus Field, and you could see the mill and Canton in the background.
Heard it.
Most beautiful picture of football field I've ever seen. Wrong colors, but it was the right. Good-looking picture.
All right, if there are no questions, I'll move on to central office renovation update. You have a copy of the OAC or Owner Architect Contract Meeting and the things we discussed there. I'll highlight just a few things for you. One may be a flooring change in the lower floor, simply because there's not a vapor barrier. You know, the age of that building, I'm not sure how prevalent vapor barriers were during construction. So there'll be some consideration on the flooring that goes in there. It'll need to be a flooring that's breathable. And we're going to, you know, they'll bring suitable products back to us, the owner, for review. But it'll have to, you know, have some breathability. There are some other items. I won't bore you by reading through this line by line, as I've indicated you have that. We are putting in a drop ceiling, which eliminated higher-end ductwork. It also eliminated the need for pan to it or conduit. They can now do just wire chases or hooks. And so through that savings, it helped offset some of the other things that may, we may want in there, which is access control on the exterior doors. So those swapping of items are a wash. Savings because the ceiling's suspended or dropped, you pick it up, you're able to pick up some additional options. So I'll, I'll let you read through that. Feel free to ask me questions at any time. But the project's moving along well. Went up the upper floor, they've already put in the metal studs and began some framing. It's beginning to take shape in the upper floor, and they continue to do a good bit of utility type work in the lower floor. But it's well underway. Any questions there?
It looks good, Dr. Putnam, and I think Dr. Rogers as well. I visited the site as I was walking one morning, and they're moving on it. It's moving pretty quick, I mean, you know.
They certainly are, and we're pleased with that.
I am too. Got some weather now, so I'm glad they're moving on.
No shortage of rain, for sure.
That's right.
All right, the next item I have is facility use. I've answered a lot of questions in the last few days. I would want everyone to understand, there, there is no opposition on our part to facility use. We, you know, we enjoy seeing the kids out and about in a variety of activities, but we also have rules and regulations to follow. And in your, I don't know if I put this one in or not, but if need be, I can get you a copy. There are two things that still prohibit the use of facilities. And the first one is the Light In Our Way document. And that is a live document. And if you look at the, that live document, it's, did we put it in there? Okay, yeah, it looks like this, just so everybody's on the same page. The Light In Our Way document under facilities actually highlights, and it reads, considerations for opera, opera, good gracious, operationalizing, sorry, got tongue-tied, operationalizing. Consider ceasing all activities involving outside groups and organizations until an evaluation is made. Also in, on down, it says, consider adapting local policies to limit or halt the use of facilities for non-education-related activities, i.e. renting of facilities after hours and on the weekends in order to reduce the possible spread of COVID-19 and to allow opportunities for thorough cleaning of the facilities during the evenings and weekends. And then if you go to the strong schools, North Carolina Public Health Toolkit for K through 12, limit non-essential visitors and activities involving external groups or organizations. This is not something Haywood County has dreamt up. These are the operational guidelines for all public K-12 schools. So with that said, facility use is still prohibited. Is there any, any questions for me on facility use? We hate it, we absolutely hate it. We understand youth sports, and many of those activities feed our middle schools and eventually our high schools. And many of these organizations, they're our kids anyway. And, but we don't, we don't make the guidance, we simply try to follow it.
Pretty clear. Mr. Francis, I just want to thank Trevor for fielding a lot of those calls. I had one conversation today along those lines myself. And we just look forward to the day that we won't have excessive restrictive rules, and we hope that that day comes soon.
We do too. All right. Ms. Barker, you ready to roll?
I am, Chairman Francis and members of the board. I wanted to just give you a brief update on summer school. In the past several years, the, the state has required a summer reading camp for our elementary students called an RTA camp. And we had planned on doing that again this year. We had also planned prior to this to also have a math camp. Just because we know those fundamental gaps in math instruction, we were just really concerned about making sure our kids had a chance to remediate in the summer months for that. And we were going to run that through sixth grade because the current fifth graders would be going into sixth grade, and the current sixth graders would be in seventh grade. And we had a very limited budget with the first round of COVID money, and we thought, well, that will really help with the middle schools and all the elementary students in math. We usually run the RTA camp as soon as school is out, those first weeks, and we were going to run the math camp two weeks before summer started, and that was our plan. And we felt good about that, but we feel even better about the opportunities our students are going to have now. There is another round of COVID CARES Act money that Dr. Bill hadn't given me yet, but he says I get every bit of it this time. Just kidding.
I did not say.
No, but there, it is a, it is going to be, the money's going to be very helpful to run a larger camp. As you know, in the past, the RTA camps were just run at certain sites on the east side and west side of our district, of our school district. And our hopes are, when we see the final, the budget and the money, and I'll talk to you too about House Bill 82 in a minute, but we hope that every school will have their own camp this summer. And this will be K through 12. So now we've re-envisioned it a little bit. The early plans were just with a restricted, smaller amount of money, so this will broaden that. Again, House Bill 82, and I didn't give it to you yet because it's not finalized. It's sitting in the Senate Rules Committee right now. This is the fourth edition of that. You probably heard some rumblings originally. It was going to be a required six weeks of summer school. The wording in that has changed, and again, this is not, this is still up for debate right now, but the current language says for at least 150 hours or 30 days over the course of the program. So there is a little bit more flexibility in that. So we'll see how it turns out. So we're kind of on hold, but we do feel like that depending on what the chart of accounts comes with this, what, how we can pay people. And that's going to be a big deal about how we can encourage our teachers. They're tired, they've worked really, really hard, and we want to try to give them, if they will come and teach this summer, we'd like to compensate them as much as legally we can under this. So we're just waiting to see what that's going to look like to try to recruit teachers. So in elementary, you know, we would do reading and math. In middle school, we would offer reading and math and science. I think science in elementary too. This also goes into some more details about how you'd have to offer some physical education, maybe some, some other extra programs. We'll see how that turns out. In the high school, we would be focused on credit recovery and maybe doing some like mini-masters of math and EOC classes for students that had not had success this year. And so we use a system called Apex Sum, and that is a credit recovery program where you can target specific standards, kids can review those standards, and then they can test on that and receive credit. So that is where we are as far as our summer school plans. We've been talking to our principals about this, even before the other amount of money. We already had, you know, great plans because we knew our kids were going to need some, some remediation. And we just, every kid missed, every kid, no matter who it was, we all missed parts of the curriculum instruction. As hard as we've tried and as good as our teachers, I feel like have done a great job. But we hope that if we can get all of our at-risk kids, we can also open this up to, to every kid. So we'll just see what the final bill looks like, and we'll go from there. But I did want you to know that we are making plans for that, so it'll be a lot more extensive this summer. We are currently really working our high schools right now on our seniors, just trying to already do some credit recovery pieces for them so we can get them graduated and, and on track in June. Any questions for me about summer school? You usually approve the summer school plan, and you know, that's extended this year. They have extended this, so we will be bringing this to you in the next month or so when we get plans finalized. Okay, graduation?
Yes.
Okay, so I was just thinking, this time last year, we had no idea what graduation would look like, and here we are again, time moves on. But we do have some tentative dates for you, and so we'll be, I will go ahead and talk to you about those, and we'll present those Monday night. But Tuscaloosa and Pisgus, if our weather holds and things stay good and we don't miss too many more days, and Dr. Bill can talk about that. But Pisgus will be on Friday, June 4th, and Tuscaloosa's will be on Saturday, June 5th. Central Haywood's Monday, June 7th. And Haywood Community Learning Center, Thursday, June 3rd. And the Early College is still to be determined, and I will talk to you about locations now, okay? So Pisgus.
I, I think we can probably, the Early College has two potential dates.
Oh, you want me to tell those?
Yeah, I think we would ask you to approve those dates on Monday, knowing that any of this could change barring some unforeseen circumstance.
The Early College tentative dates are May 13th and 14th. If they don't have a regular college graduation, just pending, but we'll go ahead. I didn't know, Dr. Bill. Okay, we'll go ahead and approve those. But the big piece is Tuscaloosa and Pisgus, the Ramsey Center. We do have that secured for the 4th and the 5th. We also have it secured the following weekend, barring additional weather, and we can't graduate on the 11th and the 12th, so the following Friday and Saturday for Tuscaloosa and Pisgus at the Ramsey Center. We have looked, and Trevor's going to help me, so I don't say anything wrong about the guidance. But the Ramsey Center, the current capacity, we think, estimated is around 7,800. So with this, the indoor for large venue, that is considered a large venue because it's over 5,000 seats. Therefore, that capacity is 30% of the stated fire capacity. So 30% of 7,800. So that gets you around, I think, what did we say, 12?
24, 20.
There's not an indoor cap?
2,400, roughly.
What, there's not an indoor cap?
Not if it's over, if it's over 5,000, you've got some wiggle room.
Yeah, if it's a medium or small venue, which any facility we have basically falls under that. Now, for the, for the large venue, like the Ramsey Center, it moves to 15%. So we're, we're, right now, we're just kind of weighing that out. But if, if it's the large or very large venue, it's 15% of the total seating capacity.
And I don't want to muddy the water, but we do not have permission from Western to use their facility. They have put us on the calendar as a hold, okay? In case they open it up. And so, and I may be stealing some of your thunder, Mrs. Barker, but we have it on hold. Our high schools are planning, you know, with the facilities that we have, stadiums and so forth. And we are hopeful that we will have additional flexibility in the next three months. And we can go beyond the 30% that we have right now in our outdoor settings. But we, we do have the Ramsey Center calendared. They have just not decided whether or not they will allow that kind of use. So we, you know, we're just keeping our options open. So we, you know, we're just keeping our options open. Uh we want, it'll be sort of like graduation last year and football games this year. We'll have multiple plans, and we'll do the best one that is available at the time. Um the other thing that I.
And they would have to get the same, somewhere, this lift of outside entities using other facilities.
That's right. That's right. That, yeah, yes, sir. That is a good um, good point to make. The other thing I would say, 'cause I anticipate you all um asking about it, is we're uh knock on wood, um in pretty good shape with graduating the two large high schools on the fourth or fifth. Uh we ha- we're close on our instructional hours because of the ransomware attack. It, we have two days that we can use to miss for inclement weather and still stay on the fourth and fifth. We have the planned remote learning optional workday in March, and we have the dreaded um day that I do not want to lose, and I'm sure other people don't want to lose either, which is the Friday before spring break. But those are two options that we could exercise uh in order to get our graduation ceremony uh kicked off on the fourth and fifth. And long, and the long-term forecast looks pretty good right now.
Dr. Rogers, that states indoor venues with more than five thousand seating capacity must limit guests to fifteen percent. So that was that, just that additional guidance. And, and you're correct, because right now, Western Carolina, per Carol Fox, is not allowing any use, so they would have to open that up, too. But we do have that. Um and you know, we do also have our stadiums, and there's some other options. So we will determine the, the place and the times as we draw near. Did y'all have any questions for me just about graduation?
If we had them in our football stadiums, though, we would be back up to a pretty good number, kinda like our football games.
Twenty-one hundred spectators. You can take care of a lot of parents.
There are two hundred, around two hundred and twenty-five. Um they're within a couple of students of each other at both of our traditional high schools right now. So when you think about, you know, each parent getting, I don't know, I shouldn't say that, ten ticket, I mean, you know, you'd still be probably okay because the, the, the staff and the students wouldn't count in that. So that's another option. It's just weather. You know, you start thinking, how do you reschedule that and um because, but anyway, we do have, we do have options, though.
It's hot.
Yeah, just trying to be positive. We're in much better shape than we were for last year's graduation.
Ooh, yes.
Absolutely.
And we have learned to make three plans and implement the best one at the mo- at that moment. So that's certainly what we'll do.
Any other questions for me? Thank you.
I think the only other thing I would add is uh when, uh if you all approve the dates, we will caution our schools to advise uh people traveling out of state to please not, you know, book the flight or the hotel room or whatever until after spring break, just to make sure we don't, you know, have weather problems. But uh again, looks pretty good right now.
Very good.
So uh Mr. Francis, we have announcements and questions. Uh we had, do have a member of the media here, and we covered my two items before you got here, so I'll catch you up. We did those first. Um if, I can catch you up after the meeting. And then are there um questions that you have, you all just have for us on anything? You know, there's lots of, lots of stuff flying around, and we have changes every day. Um I don't, I don't have any additional announcements. Do you all have any, any questions for us?
The only other item we got is uh, we got a closed session announced for some personnel matters, and uh as been our tradition, we will not come back in to adjourn. We will just adjourn from closed session. No action will be taken tonight. Uh and any action, of course, will be taken Monday night on anything we do. But anyway, this time, I need a motion to go into closed session for personnel issues.
Go move.
Dr. Rogers made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
There being none, we'll vote all those in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Kirkpatrick, did you vote? I think he was coming in remotely, he said.
He's asleep.
All right, he's good. All right, he's voting yea. So I had received word that Mr. Kirkpatrick was in the meeting, so uh at this time, we'll uh go into closed session. Meeting is beginning in closed session.